Would you like to call this meeting on the Dalton Select Board to order, please? All those who are able, please rise for my pleasure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, our God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Brittany, would you do a roll call, please?
Tom Rattell?
Here.
Mark Stroud?
Here.
Phil Bishop?
Here.
Rob Bishop?
Present.
Adam Tolle?
And John Boyle?
Here.
Okay, minutes from February 26th.
I think the motion we approved, that is from February 26, 2018.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion been made and seconded, is there any discussion?
Yeah, on the last page.
Okay, down the line.
It has the executive session minutes on it, we should take those right out of there.
Okay.
Is that a separate kind of meeting entirely?
Yeah, the executive session, it should be separate. That's the whole thing, should be separate.
Anything else?
No, John, I mean, these aren't the minutes of the executive session, these are just a motion to go in the executive session.
Yeah, but we went and, yeah, we made the motion, and then there's a litigation issue, and then there's the approval of the minutes.
I'm looking at the wrong page.
The very last, very last page, yeah. Page five.
That's weird.
You got the right minutes.
I don't know, I guess I got the wrong one.
Okay, March 12?
No.
February 26.
February 26.
Oh, alright.
So, yeah, last page, basically, after the building inspectors.
Yes, I'm guessing I don't have one. Alright. Yeah.
They do exist.
Yep. Okay, then you work for it. I was looking at the fifth.
Oh, I see it.
It was 12. No, that joke, man. We're good.
Okay, so, amend the vote.
I'll second the amendment.
I'll make a motion we approve the minutes as amended for February 26, 2018.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion been made and seconded, is there any further discussion? Are all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, minutes from March 12.
I make a motion we approve the minutes from March 12, 2018.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion been made and seconded, is there any corrections or comments?
Uh, yeah, on page one, under Habitat for Humanity.
Uh-huh.
I did not recuse myself from that discussion.
Mr. Boyle?
Uh, yeah, I did, John Boyle did.
Okay.
Mr. Boyle did. And, um, where it says Brian mentioned, uh, that was the statement that I made.
Okay.
And, uh, just a spelling on Don Giftis' name on the fourth line down in that paragraph. But I did recuse myself on the, on page two from the Council on Aging discussion. Under budgets.
Okay.
And I, the other, the last thing is, I just wanted a clarification on the remarks of the Select Board. John, the remark that you made, I just didn't understand it, what this was.
What's on? I don't, okay, what page are we at here?
We're on page two of the March, page 12, minutes. Under the remarks of the Select Board.
I made the remark that, did anyone look into the fee, to the authority this board has to waive taxes, property taxes for anyone?
Okay.
That was the only remark I made. I know it has authority to waive fees.
Okay.
That was the intent of the remark, so that's in that, yeah.
Okay.
Ken, you were here, do you know that?
No, I wasn't at the 12.
No, but do you know if the board has the authority to waive anybody's taxes, property taxes?
No.
You don't know?
I would say no. The answer is no.
Well, we went and did that, though. That was why I brought the remark, but I, anyhow, I recuse myself for the discussion.
Well, why don't, why don't, why don't we bring it up for next meeting's discussion?
Clarification?
Yes.
Clarification of the Have Def for Humanity fee waiver, tax waiver, et cetera.
And block out what procedure we need to take, if we can, for the taxes.
Meanwhile, uh, not take any action on the waiver that we handed out. One other little thing, I just noticed, John, on the front page, where was it now? Bottom line, misspelled my name. I know, Boils and Bartels, it's John's.
Can't go down B again, both.
Yep.
Make a motion we approve the minutes from March 12, 12, 2018 as amended.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion been made and seconded, is there any further discussion? Are all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. The public to address the board. This is the time when the public may address the board on any item listed on the meeting agenda or any issue or matter of the town. If you intend on addressing the board at this time, we ask you to do the following. Please identify yourself by name, address, or the company slash institution you represent. The public address to the board segment will last no longer than 30 minutes. Please make your comments concise and try not to repeat statements made by others. Please address your comments to the board chair. Discussion or debate on any issue may not take place at this time. Questions on procedural matters may be answered by the chair of the designated. Please be cordial and respectful of others. If anyone wishes to be recognized when an agenda item is discussed by the board, please make that request at this time. This request may be granted by the board chair. Address comments to the board chair and be concise. Is there anyone who wants to speak to any items on the agenda? Richard?
Hi, Richard Hope, 164 Greenridge Drive. Just wanted to let the Select Board know, I went to the Pittsfield Spectrum meeting last week, which was very enlightening on how the issues have been handled. And I know it's in the works for us to bring our committee back up and running, but I think the sooner the better, because there was a lot of issues that everyone was having switching to the new.
It's absolutely nuts.
Yeah, exactly, so, and one of the things is, if we then have an agreement in place, we can ask Spectrum to come visit us, and I think some of the townspeople might have some concerns.
Yeah, I think Ken's invited them like 10 times.
Well, yeah, I mean, we don't have an agreement at the moment, I know that's in the works, but I just wanted to, and someone from the Department of Public, Federal Communications was there taking notes as well, so, I think it's going to happen. And can I be recognized on item six? I might have my answer, question answered, though.
Sure. Okay, anyone else? Okay, now bring us to item six. Appointments to the North Mountain Park Advisory Committee.
Do you want a motion?
Yes.
Uh, based on the memorandum from Mr. Walto to us with regard to appointments to North Mountain Park Advisory Committee, um, I'm just going to read down the memo. As discussed in the Select Board meeting March 19, this communication is intended to establish a committee to advise and assist the town to create a new recreational field on a 9.5 acre town-owned parcel of land, as shown on the board of Assessors Map 215 Lot 13. The chair has asked that the committee be named North Mountain Park Advisory Committee, and that the appointments for the initial three, for an initial three-year term to expire on June 30, 2021, the committee will be dissolved upon completion of its mission. So, I make the motion that the following people, Dalton residents, be appointed to the North Mountain Park Advisory Committee. Mark Stroud of 31 Hemlock Hill Road, Glenn Ligerwell of 168 Husatonix Street, East Husatonix Street, Rebecca Whitaker of 51 Field Street Extension, Dustin Belcher of 97 Pine Street, Edward Hall of 119 Sunnyside Drive, Eric Payson of 84 Grinchall Road, Matt Morrison of 60 Anthony Drive, and Greg Barry of 110 Raymond Drive.
John, I add to your motion that Glenn Ligerwell be designated as chairman.
Wouldn't that be up to the committee?
Yeah.
Well, normally it would, but we have had incidents where we've appointed committees where we designated a person as chairman.
I don't know. Wouldn't that be a separate?
It'd be a separate motion.
Okay.
Let's do a separate motion on that.
So, the motion stands to appoint these individuals to the North Mountain Park Advisory Committee.
Could I have a second on that, please?
Certainly.
Okay, a motion been made and seconded, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
It stays, Brittany.
Chairman, I would like to move that Glenn Ligerwell of 168 East Husatonix Street be designated as chairman.
Okay, is there a second?
Well, I'll second it, but I'd, I'd like to discuss it.
Yeah, I would too.
Okay.
You know, oftentimes they just have somebody for the first meeting, and then when the group gets together, they, they make it permanent, and I think it would be appropriate that Glenn be the person for the first meeting, just to get it going, and he, he would organize a vote for the chair and for the vice chair.
I, I tend to agree with that, only to let the committee make the decision on who the officers are going to be of that committee. I'm sure that, and, and not to take anything away from Glenn.
I respect even when, but.
But to, to let the committee meet, talk, Glenn can lead the, lead the meeting, and then they can figure out who's going to be the lead, vice chair, secretary, governor, secretary, um, that type of thing. Okay, I withdraw my motion.
Okay.
Well, should we make another motion, then, that we do it the way, where we have them just the first, uh, meeting? Glenn be the act as chair?
Glenn Ligerwell of 168 East Husatonix Street be designated as temporary chairman.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion been made and seconded, is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, and Mark, once you guys get going, and Glenn, could you report, we'll put it on the agenda, and you can report to the board. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, thank you for all your time.
No, thank you.
Okay, number seven, Annual Town Meeting Budget and Mark Update. Mr. Walto?
Okay, I'll go through this really quickly before we do. There's a lot of stuff here, but you've seen most of it. The first thing, I don't know if you've got the summary of the Central Berkshire Regional School District budget, it's not changed at all from the tentative budget that was adopted and that you saw here on February 5th, but this provides a little bit more detail. So, if you turn the first page, you'll see the spending categories, getting the school committee and ending up with the OPEB trust. And overall, you can see that the entire budget is, the revenue, I mean, the spending portion of it is only up by 1.15%. Down below are the revenue categories. And you can see also that the revenue matches the expense, and it's up by 1.15%. The town assessments, I'm happy to report, overall are only up by 0.44%. And the biggest changes were the appropriation from the excess and deficiency account and the change in the school transportation revolving fund. That's contributed to most of the additional $312,000 in revenues. On the next page is the allocation and assessment of the local budgets, and you can see Dalton is up by 1.64%. Again, the overall totals are up by less than 1%, less than half a percent, actually. And you can see on the top, our, the operating budget, less the anticipated revenue makes the net town assessment, that's how it's done. And then that assessment is divided up between all the various communities based on the state assessment formula. And you can see the final portion of that is the apportionment of operating costs is based on enrollment, and that's a five-year average. And Dalton's assessment is 60, we're, or 60% of the town assessments. Finally is the capital budget, and you can see how that's also based on headcount in each school. And overall, we're going to end up with, I think it's $156,000 assessment. Almost all of that debt is excluded from the tax levy, two very small ones, Beckett-Washington, and, get the other one, not the feasibility study, are excluded. You can stop me at any time if you have a question. The next item I wanted to show you is the final compilation of the budget report that we've been looking at week after week here. And these are the final numbers, which we summarize and go to town meeting. I'd like to direct your attention to the final page, page five. And if you look down the bottom, you'll see that our tax rate and tax says is only going to increase by four tenths of 1%. That right now, and it may change at this June town meeting, so the average homeowner will see an overall yearly increase of $17.
Wow.
So, it's, essentially, it's flat this year. And we owe a lot of that to the school district, because the school district sneezes, we get in the moment, so, we're down, and that's great for us, been two years in a row, and it's really helped make our budget.
Keeps the tax rate underneath that magic number.
I want to get that magic number to 20. We've got 1999.
Sounds like a curse.
Sounds like a curse, yeah. The next piece of information I have for you, again, stop me if you have a question, is the article in tax summary. I want to point out that this is done by our Finance Committee Chairman, Terry Williams, every year.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Before we move on to the, I noticed that our group health insurance went down.
Yep.
And what's that attributed to?
Headcount.
The headcount.
Headcount's down. The premiums are actually up. The HMO is up by a little bit, over 2%, I think the PPO was up about 4%, and the medics rates were up. They were up quite high, but remember, they dropped dramatically when we switched from medics three to medics two.
Yeah.
But they bounced back up again. So, again, this is prepared by our Finance Committee Chair, as well as the final budget worksheet. And you can see how we get to the amount of taxes to be raised, and this really summarizes everything, this summarizes everything in the spreadsheet. We have total appropriations of $16.8 million. We have $17 million estimated to be raised, and then amounts used to reduce the tax rate. You can see we subtract all those numbers, the total reductions are 5.5 million, leaving a total of 11.8 million dollars to be raised by taxation. Now, the final piece of information I have for you is the motions and explanations of the articles for the annual town meeting. These are all the money articles, and a little, these are the finance committee last Thursday So, article, these are all the motions the finance committee will be making, is traditional, the finance committees make motions on anything having to do with the financial management of the town. So, Article Six is the establishment by bylaw of the various revolving funds. Heretofore, we annually establish revolving accounts and the amounts that could be raised and expended in the revolving accounts. This year, based on the Municipal Modernization Act, we have to split that in two, we'll make a change in the bylaws, and that's Article Six, establishes the revolving accounts. Then Article Seven establishes the spending limits, and that will be done annually. As to what department or entity can expend those funds, what the spending limit is, and what happens to the balance in the account at the end of the fiscal year. Article Eight is scheduled compensation for all elected officials, that's moderator, select board, and town clerk. And these differ, these don't differ at all from what's in the budget spreadsheets, they have not changed, I'm just pointing them out to you. Then Article Nine is a total amount to be raised, it's town operating budget, that's $7.2 million. Article Ten is the annual grant to the CRA for the recreation activities of the town, that's $58,000, $58,955 exactly. And then the next three articles all have to do with the school budget, which we've just seen. So, the operating budget of the schools, $7.8 million, and that's broken down with an explanation. Then the transportation budget is $339,575. And lastly, the capital budget is $156,778. Article Fourteen is the $65,000 being moved from free cash to the reserve fund, these are all kind of free cash articles. Article Fifteen is the $200,000 in free cash being used for the purposes of reducing expected tax rate increase. And I want to point out again that $127,000 of that is merely replenishing the free cash because of our communications center gets a grant of $127,000. So, we raise all that money via appropriation, and then we put that money right back in. So, we're really only using $73,000 to reduce the tax rate, I mean, that's kind of miraculous. This is what DOR would like us to do, not use any single source of funding to reduce the tax rate. Number Sixteen is the $15,000 to cover the landfill monitoring account. And remember, we had appropriation that was excess in the capital account, we've been moving that, we've got about three more years, and it'll be gone. And finally, Nineteen is moving money into the various stabilization accounts, 500,000. 200,000 to source stabilization, and 150 each to general stabilization, 150 to capital stabilization. Now, $200,000 is bigger, simply because we have to pay an excess amount to the city of Pittsfield this year, about $90,000. So, two will come in, and then a special town meeting, and nine will come out, at least. And then the final is the amount of money into the OPEB trust of $600,000. Now, I got a chance to, to look at the actuarial report, we just got the completed report, and I hadn't had a chance to study it too carefully, and I have some good results to report to you. If you look at the explanations, it tells you that the unfunded liability, as it presently stands, at $5.6 million. That's a reduction of $3 million from the last time we did this. And that's largely attributable to the money that we've been putting into the fund and the assumed rates of return we're going to get on our, it would have been even lower than that. But most of our money are in certificate of deposits now, and they use the three and a half percent so-called discount rate, or rate of return on the investment. Had we had it in, let's say, the state benefits trust, which we were thinking about, that rate of return would have been 7.2% that they would have used. The actuaries have to use a number to calculate the rate of return, which affects the unfunded liability. What we're doing, we're doing very well, the so-called annual required contribution, the other actuarial study had been about 650,000, that's down to about 450,000 to keep funding that trust.
That's good.
And that's it? Fantastic, good news. It is. More to start it.
May I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Articles one through five and nineteen, who makes the motions on those?
Select Board.
Select Board, well?
Yeah.
Okay.
In fact, well, part of my update, I'm going to get into the morning a little bit.
Okay.
Talk a little more about that. You all set, Ken?
I am, I'm doing.
Okay, item eight, Wakona Building Committee and Central Berkshire Regional School District School Funi Report. Ken?
Just quickly, with regard to the school committee, the town of Covington has requested a meeting with the, with the district to talk, negotiate about their withdrawal from the, from the district. And there is a meeting slated for April 9 at Nesseckus at 6:30, which is on our Monday meeting date. I plan on being there for the beginning of it, and I may be a little bit late for this meeting, but I will, I will be here for this meeting. The big stumbling block still with this agreement or negotiation is the OPEB liability that Covington has versus, well, what it is, is they have one amount, we have another amount, or the district has another amount, and it's, they're way harder, so. Wakona Building Committee, everything's going as scheduled?
I have a question about that.
Yes.
Other than that, one issue to be resolved, they're committed to exiting the district, Covington?
At this point in time, yeah. But again, it has to, it, the school committee voted way back when to allow them to withdraw. Once this agreement is formulated, then it goes to a vote of the towns, which has to be three quarters of the towns, or six out of the seven. I mean, Covington has to vote yes on it, too. Then if that passes, it has to go to DESI, and they have to agree to it. So, it's still quite a process at this point in time.
But they still feel strongly about it as they did two years ago?
As, as far as I know, last time, as I remember, one of, in one of their letters, they had stated that they were going to have a, a town meeting this month to discuss this, to find out what the town, what the town wants, I believe, but I haven't heard anything about that meeting taking place. So, maybe it's going to take place this week, I don't know.
Maybe they'll change their mind.
I don't know, I don't know. I don't think they will, because they, they did put that request in to negotiate or to talk, so I feel that they are on that path to continue on with the withdrawal. Any other questions?
Yeah, what happens if, like, some of the towns don't, they don't get the vote from the towns, they can't withdraw from it?
Right. And then I don't know what the next step is, I really don't. It's, it's a complicated issue. But it has to go through a process of agreement between school committee towns at town meeting, and then through DESI. And with DESI, they have to have an educational plan for their children, from what I understand. That's a big thing with DESI. And I don't, I don't even know, I don't even know that that has taken place.
If it gets to the stage where they need permission of other members of the district, this will be an individual vote, in other words, they need six out of the seven, not one these district-wide votes, where you just have a simple majority.
It's a town meeting vote, each town meeting, from what I, from what I gathered from the last meeting, it's a town meeting.
Six out of the seven, or, yeah, six out of the seven in the affirmative vote.
Right.
One more question, John, would there be any information, what it would cost, an increased cost to each town if they left the district?
I don't have numbers.
Would, would somebody?
I don't have numbers, and I can't, well, we can look at.
See what they thought?
Well, let's just say, for instance, if you look back at your Covington, the budget, say their assessment, Covington's assessment is, their net town assessment is 773, well, $774,000. So, I would imagine that if that took place, that or a portion thereof, because I don't know if it would be exactly that amount, but that neighborhood wouldn't be any more than that, but that neighborhood would have to be.
Vied up?
Vied up amongst the towns to take up the slack.
If they did a pro rata assessment, we would get approximately half of that figure.
Good, now seeing that we paid 60%. But again, those, those, the exact answer on that, you know, I'm only making a.
No, we're trying to think ahead, that's all.
An educated guess, yeah. But that is, that is one of the questions to be answered. Anything else, son?
No, but thank you for all your time on that, Randy, it's a lot, it's a lot of time.
But like I said, I want to go to the meeting, it's, it's public, it's public meeting at Nesseckus, and I may not be here until about quarter after 7:00, 7:30.
John, if you need to stay there.
Oh, no, because there's things on next meeting.
Okay.
I really want to be here for it, too, you know, it's like being in two places at one time, but, so, I just, just to give you a heads up.
Okay.
As for the Wakona Building, everything's moving along as scheduled, the guidance from Scanza, who is the owner, project manager, and DRA, who is the design architect, has been very good, and they have been very helpful. This week, in fact, well, let me, let me backtrack here, the educational plan for the school, as for what the, what the school is going to need to educate the children, will be. to educate the children, will be completed by the looks of it the first week in April, and then after that, the school committee approves that plan, and then it gets moved to the MSBA for approval. So a couple of months, that should be taken care of. Now, coming up, starting tomorrow, there will be the community workshops that I have discussed before in past meetings. The first one's going to be at 5:00 PM at the Windsor Town Hall, and the second one will be at 7:00 PM with Wakona High School, I believe in the cafeteria, and they're about a 90-minute session. Anybody isn't, can attend. And you can attend multiple sessions, too. If you want to go to Windsor, and if you want to go to the one at Wakona, you may. Or if you can only make Windsors, go to Windsors and not go to Wakona, you know. There's also a couple more workshops on the 29th, two days later, 5:00 PM at Beckett-Washington School, and at 7:00 PM at Kittredge Elementary School. And again, you can go to either one. Anybody can go. You don't have to be a resident of Beckett or have children going to that school. This is for anybody in the district. And our next meeting of the building committee will be on April 12th, 4:30 PM in the library in Wakona. So that's my report.
All right, thank you, Ken.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions for Ken? Okay. Item nine, town manager updates.
Okay, I only have two items for you, and I'll answer any questions, everybody, if you're ready. First is a letter we received today from the chairman of the planning board, and happy to report that the planning board, I think met on the 21st, and says so, held a public hearing on the proposed bylaw change, that's Article One, and voted unanimously to support extending the moratorium on, yes, creation of any marijuana establishments in Dalton as of December 31st, 2018. That's Article One. Second item I have for you is the final draft of the warrant. It's now been reviewed by town council. I went over with him today. And there's really minor textual changes, except for one of the articles. So Article One's changed a little bit, just to make it read a little bit more smoothly. It changed nothing of substance. Article Four, again, was changed slightly by town council, authorizing something. I didn't do it in bold, so you can't really see the changes, but there's nothing significant there. I just wanted to point out a little bit of minor textual changes. Now, Article Six was the most significant change, because our council, Colton and Paige, looked at, the article that I drafted was based on a model supplied by the State's Department of Revenue, and it had loads of detail. Probably don't remember, but it was, went on for a page. And they have a very simple, as you can see here, article, warrant article, which I've substituted on the recommendation. All it really does is ask the town to adopt the revolving funds, and then it lays out the revolving funds haven't changed at all. It's just as it was, so that is the only significant change, and it's much simpler. And that was it, as far as changes go. Everything else is the same. And so I've given the final version of this to the town clerk. He'll produce a final copy for your signatures on April 9th, next time.
Ken, one question. Did a stormwater pass to get on this to reduce their number from nine to seven members?
They did. I mean, it really kind of, it was too late to work it in, so we'll do it at the June meeting. I've got to.
Okay.
Yeah.
May I just bring up two points on these? It's really important that we pass the moratorium extension, because we're not really ready with the bylaws. If we don't pass the extension, we won't actually have any bylaws that are dealing with marijuana in the town. The other question I have, just a clarification, can we pass a bylaw at other than the May meeting?
Yes.
Can?
Yes, at any meeting.
Because we really need to do that, because we can't wait. We have to obviously do it this year, and it won't be ready for the May meeting. Obviously, there's not a time for that.
Right. My expectation is that the planning board will be ready by the fall.
Yes.
And we may, depending on whether the planning board is ready or not, sometimes in the fall, usually before we set the tax rate, if we have to move any money around, that's the ideal time.
Yes.
If we don't have to have a, that's typically an October-ish, because of the tax rate set in November. But if not, then we can go right up to the end of the planning board, hit the planning board all the time they need.
And do we have any thoughts of what would happen if the extension isn't passed at the May meeting?
No, we'll hold, we'll hold our breaths and maybe do something in June.
Well, I think we really need to speak to the importance of making sure that the extension happens.
Yeah, we need a two-thirds vote, too.
Thank you.
Anything else, anyone else?
Just a reference, we're going to be discussing this next meeting about the tax deferral for Habitat. I would imagine that if we can't do it, it would be a town meeting action.
I, except for tax increment financing, I know of no other way to absolve people from paying their taxes. I'll look into it a little more, but, you know, the only way I know is through tax increment financing deal.
Wouldn't the net effect be the same if the town decided to give a contribution that would cover the cost to, to the project?
Yes, if you could grant money for that purpose.
Somehow, somehow it's being, from what I've been told and gathered, somehow it's being done in Pittsfield. And I don't know if city council's just like, yeah, okay, you're good, because they don't have town meeting. Maybe that would be the place to.
Yeah.
To check, see what the, what the process is there.
Something that I'm not aware of.
And if we can't, if we can't do it, we can't do it. I mean, it's just so it is, so.
In Pittsfield, nobody ever asked that question. It just ended with a bunch of other.
That would surprise me, but it could be. It could be.
Well, right, John, it could be another mechanism that we're not aware of. The city council action, as opposed to a, like, board or something like that.
Right.
Or the mayor.
With the town meeting, whatever. Town meeting versus city council, versus mayor versus.
Yeah, if it's available to the city, it ought to be available to the town. And maybe, I know there's some, like, special districts for affordable housing, where you can do tax increment financing type deals. We don't have one of those here, but I've got to find out the details.
Okay. I was just wondering if it was a town meeting decision, that's all.
It is most likely, if it can be done, it's most likely to require a town meeting action.
Ken, can we also get a figure of what number we're talking about? It can't be much, because the taxes that we're waiving are on the existing building, which is pretty decrepit.
Yeah.
So it can't be very much that we're going to waive. We're only waiving during a, we're only attempting to waive it during a period of construction.
Yeah.
And then the new owner will start a new assessed rate of paying regular taxes, so it can be a lot, but I know, I think they said that, every little bit helps.
Sure.
So if you could.
Yeah, I'll take a look at that.
We, what we do discuss is the figure could be available, or approximate figure.
Yeah.
It'd be good.
Oh, we have an assessment on the property, so we know exactly what we're supposed to be paying.
But, yeah, well, as for the whole year, well, we can divide that by two. I mean, according to them, they're going to be done by this fall, the construction for them. That's their goal, this is some kind of a disaster. So it's basically half a year of taxes. But all year is all right. We can divide it by two, I think.
Right.
Anything else? Okay. Items for future agendas?
I got one thing. I'd like to just have a placeholder on the future agenda for, and just have it titled the Green Committee, and just leave it at that for right now. Just looking into a couple of things, and I'll bring it forward when I'm ready.
I did ask for a couple of things today with Ken about putting agenda item on, and one of them, which is not on here, after a conversation with John Roughly, our highway superintendent, he asked if we couldn't discuss the finalization of Husatonix Street and what he feels needs to be addressed.
Yeah, it's important, John.
The contract ends April, the end of April, so it's imperative that we do this next meeting, and Ken wrote it down on the, yeah, the draft schedule.
Okay. Will John be ready with a list, Ken, or whatever?
I think so. He hasn't spoken to me directly about it.
Well, when I spoke to him, I told him that I would try to get it out for our very first meeting in April, and I asked him to have everything ready, and he said he would, so I'm sure he, I'm sure he will.
Okay. And the other one?
And then the other thing was, it's the item on the bottom of the page, and Ken's going to check to see if our collector would be ready to speak to the online payments of bills.
By online, I mean credit cards.
Credit cards, debit cards, whatever, yeah. But to do it online.
Yes.
Yeah. So those are the only two things. I just wanted to make, I wanted to make the board aware that that was my request to the, to the town manager.
Are you saying that a person couldn't walk in here and do a swipe with their credit card on premises?
I believe you can't, I believe that's how it's set up, too.
Yeah.
Because last time we spoke about this, but this was back in August of 17, that we'd have to have one of those machines.
Terminals.
Terminals, whatever, yeah.
Those are pretty easy to install, but there's a cost.
I don't know.
I thought that's what you were talking about. I think more people would be served with that methodology, as opposed to going online, kind of complicated for some people.
Well, there is, that, that request has come to me through email about doing it online, so.
Anything else? Okay. Remarks of the Select Board. Brings us to our announcements. New Veterans Agent office hours are Wednesdays from 8:30 AM to 11:30 AM at the Town Hall, and 11:40 AM to 1:30 PM at the Senior Center. Services for Dalton veterans are now available Monday through Friday through the North Adams Veteran Service Department. Please call 413-662-3040. Public Power is now the town supplier for the municipal electric program. You will see that name as a supplier of electricity on your ever-sourced bill, unless you have another supplier. To opt out, opt in or out of the program, go online to colonialpowergroup.com/dalton, or call Public Power at 1-800-830-2944. The Dalton Police Department is reminding the citizens of Dalton that the winter parking ban from 1:00 AM to 6:00 AM, which wanted to affect November 15th, 2017, will be in effect to April 15th, 2018. I hold office hours by appointment. Please call Select Board for further information, or Judy at the Town Hall at 684-6111, extension 11. Please note that Dalton's official meeting, postings, agendas, and minutes can be viewed at mytowngovernment.org/01226. State Representative Paul Mark holds office hours at the Dalton Town Hall, 462 Main Street in the Callahan Room, on Tuesdays from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM, with the exception of the third Tuesday of each month. On the third Tuesday, office hours are 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the Town Hall, and from 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM at the Dalton Senior Center. You can reach his office at his district number, which is 413-464-5635. The Building Inspector office hours are Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and on Tuesday from 8:00 AM to 12:30 PM. Motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion made and seconded, there's any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.